Car keys, car keys, car keys, car keys! Car keys, car keys, car keys, car keys!
Form a circle!
Hey, hold on, get back, you guys, get back!
Hey, back up, man!
I gotta press faster somewhere. I gotta press faster somewhere. I gotta press faster somewhere.
Back up, back up, back up!
Oh, good thing, USA! Sad state of affairs for my country.
A sad state of affairs.
USA, 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 USA!
If he does not leave, he may be arrested. It's another criminal law enforcement action. Found a police department and attempted to use kinetic energy for detonation. Chemical gas. Which included 40mm impact munitions, chemical ball, OCS gas. If he do not disperse, he will be arrested under penal code section 409. Refusing to disperse at 416, remaining present at an unlawful assembly. If arrested, do not resist. At this time, members of the press, you should move to a designated safe area. The following routes of dispersal are north on Kenwood and north on Jackson. It is now 6:20. You have five minutes to leave the area. You must leave the area! The current hour time is 6:20.
Are you the security for this, these guys? Will you stop getting my shot, please?
General, you know that will save your soul. Only Jesus Christ saves the soul. Do you hear about that in your classrooms? Oh, it's been a long time since you've heard this. You're up, you're up, you're up! The Lord is Jesus. You don't hear about that in the media, do you?
Leave our kids alone!
We refuse a fascist America! 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 We refuse a fascist America!
Watch out, watch out! Watch around, let's go! We are 14 for round 6, this is our plot.
Guys, how can you let a roomy over there, huh? Where are you people? You guys lost?
Hey, what happened to the majority of people wanting this shit?
You came up from a male and a female. You were made from a male and a female.
There, you go, let's go, we're going down walking, okay? They're there, they're there, let's go.
I know you're good people, you're good people, I know you're good people, but it's time to leave you to them. I don't want to run, okay? I want you guys to...
All these little fucking clowns, who has a daughter or son, okay? Separate them into sections. Who has a son, so... If your son gets, I don't know, turned down by four, five, five girls while he's growing up, he's gonna go back to his core and, 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 and go to the third section? No, bro. You have a kid? Good, you know, you know what I'm talking about. You know what I'm talk- exactly know what I'm talking about. That's, I know where I'm gonna walk.
How can I help you guys?
Please clear the street. Clear the street off.
Leave our kids alone and then we're gonna go home. Leave our kids alone and then we're gonna go home. This is a parking sidewalk. Let's not send our kids on the sidewalk. They're parked there, and then they're gonna take us, and then we were gonna stop by making cuts out.
Well, because eventually we'll open up the street, and, and, well, I want you off the street before we open it up, okay? Alright, let's get that far away, now let's go.
The parking sidewalk.
You peasants need to get off the street, get off the sidewalk, you peasants!
Are you gonna come over and bring us to the yard? Let the police down, let the line catch up.
We're having a class action lawsuit against your department, it's for violence, it's for violence. Class A gear drops and pushing people, which is a law. This is our sidewalk! This is our sidewalk, and we have a right to break the law in it. We have a right to block it up. We have a right to be on the sidewalk. We pay for these sidewalks. You are not a peaceful protester. You're not a peaceful protester.
We are not anti-fa, fa-fa.
Let's go, guys, let's go, let's go! Let's go!
Let's go home, and then we come back for the next, uh, meeting that we have. Our fight is not with the police department, let's not make a scene so they get more credit. Our fight is not with the police department. Let's go home, and then we come back for the next meeting.
This is a worldwide, global event, and you are part of it, you are part of history, and nothing! God bless you, God bless America! God bless our children! And we gotta take this school down. Thank you, guys! Go, Seth, thank the police! Thank the police, they are doing their jobs. Thank them, and it's time to go home, we'll see you 20th, God bless you!
I have friends in the LGBT community who is absolutely against what is going on. It's not right, and it has to stop now! These books, such as Gender Queer, This Book Is Gay, has depictions of children doing sex acts. And, for some people, it's not good enough for them that they can get these books in Barnes &amp; Noble, Amazon, unfortunately, the public library, but it's not good enough for them, and they want it in our schools. And guess what? We're not going anywhere because we're taxpayers, and these are our schools too! It's unacceptable!
Race, oppression, anti-gay, Christian fashion, go away! Race, oppression, anti-gay, Christian fashion, go away!
Leave our children for...
You want these Kenny Potters books?
Leave our children for...
Christian fashion, go away! You are a racist! We do not want these Kenny Potters books in the school! Are you okay with this? Say it, say it! Tell everybody, are you okay with this book in the school? Gender queer! Are you okay with it? Can we find common ground? Please, can we find common ground? Can we find common ground? Who is okay with this book? Who is okay with this book?
Those rights, they are inalienable! They precede the state! The state is meaningless! If any of those rights is dead, and that is why we are here, we respect their rights too. They have their own, their own constitution, their own values, their freedom of speech.
Pedophiles, go away!
Get out of here! Get out of here, all of you! Shame on you!
Double cross, go away!
Nobody wants to hear you! Stop it, you pedophile!
All of these people, these people cannot be allowed to argue with us! You're a pedophile!
USA! 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 USA!
Arab Americans are not taking any of our games! You're not taking any of them!
Christian fascist go away! Racist sexist anti-gay, Christian fascist go away! Christian fascist go away!
Tell me about your best friend right there!
And you had a chance to get in here, you should have been strong from the point of view of... You should have been strong from the point of view of... Racist sexist anti-gay, Christian fascist go away! Racist sexist anti-gay, Christian fascist go away!
You see these fucking people, they're just idiots!
USA! 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 USA!
Are you a student of USP or are you a student of USP? Are you a student of USP? Are you a student of USP?
They're not welcome here!
There's no need to talk to Americans except to say you love them, and God bless them!
USA! 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 USA!
It's for God, not for trying to fight it!
I don't wanna be like you, because you have to cover your face. You're ashamed of what you do. If you were ashamed, you would show your face. If you were ashamed, you would show your face. See? That's it! That's the dollar in life, bro. God bless you, lady, God bless you!
What about the Catholic Church? What about the Catholic Church?
And I'm against that, I'm against Catholicism. I'm against it, because I don't believe in a Catholic priest. He's a globalist, honey. Poop is a globalist! Poop is a globalist! The poop is a globalist! He wants you to take the bus while he rides around in private plates! He's a globalist, silly lady, you're on the side of globalism. I'm not! I don't believe in the globalists. He's not my god! My god is right up there! That's my god!
That's right, my god is on the...
Leave our kids alone! 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 Leave our kids alone!
Get the fuck over here with your fascist bitch! Don't step on some fucking fucking mannequin! No, get the fuck out, bitch! Get the fuck out of here, bitch! Fucking get the fuck out of her face!
White picture man, I see you, Christmas!
Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate!
Love, not hate! Love, not hate!
Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate! Love, not hate!
That's it, that's all there is. Because we are all gonna stand before the mayor, and we are gonna be accountable to what we do and what we don't do.
Let's shut the rest of the place, and then we'll see if it's not bad. And then we'll say, what's the difference? And then we'll have these discussions about transition, and then we'll have a call.
I don't understand, give him a hug!
A 27-year-old!
Have you got much protection, or what?
My god, I see you, hey, come on over here, come see me, please! I can hold you, I love you!
Don't say hate! Don't say hate! Don't say hate!
Why do you have no answer? There is only one answer!
We're all here for the children! We're all here to protect the children! Oh, it's not all!
Please tell me where in the Bible it says there are 75 genders? The neighbor is male or female, and that's it! Yes, ask me something! I don't care about the news, I'm talking about the gods that are coming out of this building! The news lies! Media lies! You're all gonna manipulate the stories just to favor you! What's your question?
Why is it that mostly people call it pedophilia? Your god, your state, your rights! White guy, tell me!
Because the news manipulates the stories and picks what they report!
We are here to protect your rights! We're here to protect your god-given rights! God bless you! We are here to protect your rights, your right to privacy, because that defines our right to privacy! We are all part of this country! It is our right to privacy! You're traveling!
Family, family, it's today, but the only thing I really need to tell them is... Who need? Because we are the people that is here.
It is a shame that you don't leave your kids alone!
Yeah, you better leave my kids alone, you moron! I hate that, yeah, damn! Kiss the American flag wherever you see it!
What's going on, Sid? I have a question, bud. I have, I have a wife, they're both...
They don't wanna tell me why they're out here.
They don't wanna talk to you, because you're a fascist!
Why they're out here, what they're doing.
I'm supposed to get your mom!
Very intelligent answers.
And then he said, "No, we're good."
Go home!
Leave, motherfucker!
No one wants to talk to you, you're a fascist! No one wants to talk to you, you're a fascist! No one wants to talk to you, you're a fascist!
And you're ugly too! You're too ugly to hate with a cane! It's you! It's an ugly, an ugly man like you!
Hey boss, come here, come here! Sir! Are you trying to get back, or no? Walk him out, bro!
Hard like a dog, man! Hey, come right here, they crap right there!
Don't touch me! 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 Don't touch me!
Back up, please, back up, back up, thank you, back up! Back up, thank you. Hey, let's come back this way, so we'll do the other, at least, where they're asked for. Julian, go over there. Ridiculous. Leave my kids alone! Leave my kids alone!
Live, not hate! Get the fuck out! Get the fuck out! Get the fuck out! Fuck you guys! Say no! Fuck that! Fuck that! Live, not hate! 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 Get the fuck out! Get the fuck out! One side! Alright, one side! Purposeful, ladies and gentlemen! Are you purposeful, ladies and gentlemen? Fuck my people! Fuck my people! Fuck my people! Fuck your fascists, motherfuckers! The fascists paid, motherfuckers! Listen on the side, why you saying this? On your side, you're not, not, not coming to tell us. Tell us, you're a crazy woman! Peace, peace, peace! Stop showing pornography to our children! Stop showing pornography to our children! Stop showing pornography to minors to our children! That is illegal! Stop showing porn to our children! We're not a team, we're just deeper with this problem.
Hey, somebody else, like, fuck you, as a fucking guy, bitch! Fuck you, what's up? What's up? Yeah, fuck you, bitch! Get the fuck out of here, man! What's up, man? What's up? What's up? What's up? What's up? What's up? Bitch, what? You're a bitch, man, don't look at me here! Bitch, fuck into my eye, motherfucker! What's up? Yeah, 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 yeah! Yeah! What? What's up? Take your mask off, man! Take your mask off! Right in your face! You ain't from here! You ain't from here, man! What's up, man? What you doing, man? We playing! What you doing, man? We playing! What's up? Where you from? Where was that, where we from? Bro! What? What's up? Yeah! Pussy, you wish you were a man enough to be a man, pussy! You wish you were a man enough! Right, right, right! Yeah! You wish you were a man enough to be a man! Your fucking people fried in the valley, bitch! Right, right! Right, right! 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 Don't look for it! Hey, look into my eyes! Don't, don't look over there, look right over here, man! Both teachers, look right over here! Both teachers, yeah! Yeah, pussy! Get him his feet! Look, don't look over there, he's right over here, pussy! Look right over here, bitch! No, you don't, you don't love me, you liar! Right over here, pussy! You don't love me, right? I don't trust you. Just leave it, bitch, alone! Yeah! You wish you were a man enough to be a man, yeah! You be fun with the very people that are saving you! So they continue to push down your eyes, you're incompetent! Right, 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 right! You guys ain't fucking... So, devil! Brass knuckles, brass knuckles, brass knuckles! Fuck the fucking men, the brass knuckles! Stay over there, brass knuckles! They're talking to you, brass knuckles! Brass knuckles! You guys are rock! Back, back up, back up! I can't, I can't! You know my brass knuckles? Hey, hey, do me a favor, can you get my, hey, let's press first? Press that, on the ground. On the ground. Press that. Oh, thank you so much. You're a terrorist! You're a terrorist! Fuck you, bitch! Yeah, we did! We did your pocket, there. You have to have some of this pocket! We've seen it, I've seen it, we're fucking assholes! Try it, we're trying. Now they're doing horrible things, man! Not surprising, you keep having them, they're always over here! Have a great day! Look at that, you fucking bastard! Red meat! Fuck you! Come back with the money! Right, right, right! Ah, shit, my kid! You don't walk back from a crowd of you. I think whatever you... Sorry, 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 sorry. Send the terrorists! What brings you out here today? Why are you here? What brings you out here today? Why are you here? Back up! What brings you out here today? Why are you guys here? Why are you here? Why are you here? Reverend, why are you here? What brings you out here today? Let's go, ho! Let's go, ho! What you doing? What you doing? You guys are... You're fucking, oh, god! You're holding it, you're holding it, you're holding it, you're holding it. Let's go, ho! Let's go, ho! Get aside, get aside! Come on! Take your mask off! Take your mask off! Take your mask off! Take your mask off! Take it off, man, take it off! Take it off, brother! Take it off, let's see what you look like, come on! Anybody stand there with a mask, bitch! Everybody, go! Hey! Hey, come down! Hey, hold down! Step away! Step away! You're good, you're good. Car keys, car keys, car keys, car keys! Car keys, car keys, car keys, car keys! Form a circle! Back up, back up, back up, back up! Back up, back up! Back up! Do not put police in danger! Do not take the bait! They are protecting you! Don't make them happen! More important than I asked you! Do not put police in danger! Hey, hold on, get back! You guys get back! Get back! Back, oh, man! Back, up! Back up! Hey! Back up, man! I gotta press faster somewhere. I gotta press faster somewhere. I gotta press faster somewhere. Back up! Back up! Back up!